It doesn't, there's no.
Well, it just would be nicked and that's no. All right, what is today? I'd like to call to order the February 14th meeting of the Shelby Township Planning Commission. Ask the Secretary to call the rule, please.
Mr. Snyder, absent. Mr. Meredith, absent. Ms. Gonzalez, absent. Mr. Grott?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Appone?
Here.
Mr. Luray?
Here.
Chairman Moffett, we have a quorum.
Thank you. At least we know which members of the board celebrate Valentine's Day a little bit more heartily than other members of the board. Uh, where are we at? Next is approval of the agenda.
So move?
Support.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item is approval of the minutes from the January 24th meeting.
So move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, three site plan this evening, the first being site plan number 21-38, special land use number eight, John Beninati. And this is a public hearing, so I'll ask the Secretary to read the notices published.
Charter Township of Shelby, notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the planning commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following special land use. Applicant, John Beninati, HIA Management 6991 Auburn Road, Shelby Township, Michigan 48317. Proposed use, outdoor construction, storage yard. Location 4437, 22 Mile Road, north side of 22 Mile Road, east of Ryan Road. Site plan number 21-38 SLU-8. Legal description, oh, Sidwell number 23-07-20-300-005. Legal description is as follows. Planning Commission will meet on Monday, January 24th, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Shelby Municipal Building, Van Dyke, Michigan. Shelby Township, Michigan 5867267243, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the special land use application. There should be a notation, this is not January 24th, right?
February 14th.
February 14th.
February 14th, yeah.
Make a notation for the special land use application. The application for the special land use in the site plan may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department and the Municipal Building Monday through Friday from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM. Written comments may be submitted to the Planning Commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110, 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett, Chair, Raquel Moore, Secretary. This was published on January 5th, 2022 on Macomb Daily. There were 22 property owners and one applicant were notified by first-class mail on January 28th, 2022.
Thank you. So I always ask this question, normally it's just a formality, but now I think we may have an issue, but I'll ask our legal counsel, did this publication meet legal requirements?
As to time of publication, it does. The second publication, as to the landowners and one applicant, certainly was sent out after the January 24th date. So to be perfectly safe, we should really re-notice this, but...
Yeah. Well, because the, I mean, the published notice also says January 24th, so it's, it's wrong. Mis-published?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry that we're gonna have to do this, but we'll have to, we're gonna have to post- Would we be tabled to the next meeting, or how long will the publishing take? Julie, can we get the notice, Paul?
Well, it has to be 15 days prior to the meeting, so the next meeting would be the 28th. No, yeah, so it wouldn't be-
Wouldn't make it, so it would be the first meeting of March. It would be the 14th of March.
Okay.
There was one published after.
Hold on one second. I know, that's what I was looking for, too, one second. So we actually pulled the wrong notice for the file, but the publication is...
Safe.
Hold on.
My B?
Yep. So it was just the wrong.
People on here, remember, yeah, why?
So that was the one that was published. What was on your packets was the previous one with the incorrect date. So that is what was published in the paper right there, with the correct date.
And what was mailed to the, what was mailed to?
To the property owners with the correct date. We have the, the, this is what is actually mailed out to property owners, is notification postcodes with the correct date.
Okay.
So just the wrong notice was included in your packets.
Yeah, I'm just asking, I'm just checking with counsel to see if that satisfies the requirement, if she's satisfied by the requirement. Do we have, how do we?
I would say let's redo the notice. Let's reread the notice, the correct-
Reread it?
Just to clarify the record.
One more time, sorry. You're stuck with me. Charter Township of Shelby, notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the planning commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following special land use. Applicant, John Beninati, HIA Management 6991 Auburn Road, Shelby Township, Michigan 48317. Proposed use, outdoor construction, storage yard. Location 4437, 22 Mile Road, north side of 22 Mile Road, east of Ryan Road. Site plan number 21-38 SLU-8, Sidwell number 23-07-20-300-059. Legal description is as follows. The planning commission will meet on Monday, February 14th, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Shelby Municipal Building, 52700 Van Dyke, Shelby Township, Michigan 5867267243, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the special land use application. The application for the special land use in the site plan may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department and the Municipal Building Monday through Friday from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM. Written comments may be submitted to the Planning Commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett, Chair, Raquel Moore, Secretary. This was published on January 26th, 2022, in the Shelby Utica News. And there were 22 property owners and one applicant were notified by first-class mail on January 28th, 2022.
Okay, thank you. So Julie?
Uh huh.
The initial notice that was read, that was in the Macomb Daily, or never got published in the Macomb Daily?
Well, it was published, but once we knew that it was incorrect, we postponed this item and then postponed it to this meeting, re-notified everybody and republished it.
Okay. So are you satisfied?
So long as it was subsequently published with a correct notice and the correct date adjourning it from the prior date, then yes, the notice requirements will be met.
Did we adjourn, we adjourned it from the prior?
No, we noticed that it was incorrect before we even put, put this item on the agenda. So we just took, pulled it off agenda. It wasn't confirmed on an agenda.
Okay. You satisfied?
I'm satisfied.
All right, fair enough. Let's move on. It's you.
(laughing).
It is.
Thank you.
So next, next question is, can you explain under the, uses under the present zoning and whether the special land use request is appropriate?
This property is zoned heavy manufacturing, which is set forth at Section 3.20 of the Shelby Township zoning ordinances. This request would fall under a special land use, which is governed by Section 6.5 of the Shelby Township ordinances. Prominent outdoor storage requires a special land use approval. So in addition to 6.5, this would also be addressed under Section 4.13D and 4.53, which for further regulation.
So it is appropriate?
It is an appropriate request in this zoning district.
There we go. Thank you. Uh, so the format for the public hearing will be as follows. The petitioner will state what they're requesting, their reasons for it, then bring it back to the board, we'll ask questions of the petitioner. I'll then open it up to the public for any questions or comments you all may have. I will make note of those, bring the petitioner back up to answer any questions that are raised. And with that, anyone that speaks needs to state your name and your address, and when you're done speaking, sign in.
Very good, thank you. Pete Snyder, Everland Consultants, 8800 23 Mile Road, Shelby Township, representing the applicant.
Yeah, why don't you just take-
I'm having fun with the mic. Is this good?
All right, go ahead.
All right, representing Mr. Beninati, who is here with me, representing the project here. The parcel is about 1.8 acres. It's on the north side of 22 Mile Road, between Shelby Road and Ryan Road. It's zoned HM, there's HM on either side of it, east and west. There's also HM across the street south on 20, south of 22 Mile Road. To the north is some R1C, I believe, or R1B, some residential, but it's currently being used as industrial. There's two buildings existing on the site and a garage, I guess you could count that as a third building, but it's technically a garage, that are on the site. All are proposed to remain. The proposal is for special land use to allow outside storage of contractor equipment and contractor materials on the site. The, the site plan, of course, is submitted for you, and this is a, this is for a swimming pool installer contractor, okay? So on the site plan, the, there is about 200, 220 feet from the front of the building over to 22 Mile Road to the south. That's where the equipment would be stored, meaning the, the vehicles and, and other contractor equipment. The area behind the building, meaning to the north, that's where the materials are going to, are proposed to be stored. Gravel surface, there's a list of materials proposed to be stored on the site plan. We have added, again, this, this site plan initially came in and it's been through the preliminary review process before you saw it, so most of the planners' comments, we got them a while ago and are addressed on this plan. One of the comments is the major M2 screening, which is a six-foot berm with a bunch of plantings, screening this HM from the residential to the north, that's on the plan. There's also a new entrance to 22 Mile Road and new berms on the south and a new fence. One comment that's, I guess, unaddressed still is whether or not to put screening slats on the fence that faces 22 Mile Road. The proposal that came to you showed the fence there, but it was silent on whether or not the, the diagonal screening slats belonged on that fence. Certainly, we're open to adding them. So the, and there's a new dumpster enclosure, again, behind the building, that would be to the north of the building. It was submitted along with a brief discussion of the eight special land use standards, and again, as I said, it's already been through the preliminary review process. I call it the departmental review process, and those comments have been pretty much addressed. So with that, I am available for any questions, as is the applicant himself.
Okay, thank you. To the board, are there any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, this is the only public hearing the planning commission will hold on this special land use request. All remarks will be entered into the record for Township Board evaluation. We are a recommending body, and the Township Board will evaluate our recommendation, which is the legislative body. The Township Board will make the final decision on this special land use request. At this time, anyone in the audience is free to ask any questions or offer any comments. And like I said, I would just need a name and an address, and when you're done speaking, to sign in. Does anyone wish to address this item? Going once, going twice. Can bring it back to the board and ask the planner for her comments.
Thank you, Mr. Moffett. So as Mr. Snyder noted, we did do a preliminary review on this site plan. There's a couple items that are required as part of this and two variances, one for the fence in the front yard setback and the outdoor storage that they're proposing in the front yard as well. And also, I have a question for Mr. Snyder as far as the intentions of the gravel pit in the back. Is that going to remain, or is that going to be graded to, to a flat surface? And other than that, it's, it's conforms to the zoning district and the master plan, other than what Mr. Snyder mentioned with the slats in the front yard for the fencing. Also, the fence on the west property line encroaches into the neighbor's property, so that, that would have to be straightened out, so it does not encroach onto the neighbor's property according to the site plan. And again, we're happy to see this site being cleaned up for the most part. It's been a subject of significant blight and, you know, being used without the benefit of any approval. So bringing it in some sort of compliance is, is what the township would like to see.
Yeah. Let me address the gravel pit thing. It says gravel pit. It's required in your ordinance that we show the underlying soils, soil conditions on every site plan. The county soils map labels that soil condition type as gravel pit. So there's no gravel pit there. There, apparently, the county soils mappers thought that there was at one point, and that's what they labeled the soils district as. That's all it is, is the soil district designation for the underlying ground that's beneath the site. And, and if you look confused, I was too, because usually they'll use a different word for gravel pit, and it's a big, long word that starts with U, and it's very hard to say, and I don't even try to say it, but yeah.
In terms of straightening out the fence, you're good with that?
Yes, certainly.
And then slats would be, ZBA, make a decision on the, whether this, if you want, if you're not gonna put the slats in the fence, it's a-
They're not required, but our master plan, our master plan just has a recommendation to install the slats to, to screen, to further screen it. I know they're proposing landscape buffers along the front, but I think it would be beneficial to have some sort of screening from-
All right, I don't feel strongly, I don't know, but if you're free to do it, that's, okay. Okay, um, bring it back to the board for, is your motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Support.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Our recommendation this evening must be based on the following: compatibility with adjacent land uses, consistent with and promote the intent and purpose of the special land use, compatibility with the natural environment, consistent with the capacities of public services and facilities affected by the proposed use, protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and the adequacy of public access to the site. This evening, we may recommend approval to the board, disapprove the request, or recommend that we table it to evaluate it further. At this point, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner?
I'll move to recommend approval to the Township Board for site plan special land use application number 21-38 SLU-8 for John Beninati for HIA Management, based on the applicant addressing all the department comments, the engineers' comments, and offering a favorable recommendation for the required two variances.
Support.
It's been moved by Turner, support by Moore. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Grott?
Yes.
Commissioner Appone?
Yes.
Commissioner Luray?
Yes.
Chair of the chefs. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next item, site plan number 22-05, Andrew Shaw for Aldi Food Market. You're gonna run Costco out of business, is that what?
That's our goal.
Okay, name and address, and then just a brief presentation of what you're requesting.
Sure. My name is Chris Jankovic. I'm with Design Engineers. With me is Mr. Andrew Shaw of Aldi. Aldi is proposing to remodel and repurpose an existing vacant lease suite. This is located in the Shelby Town Center. Used to be occupied by the Raleigh House, but now that has been vacated, and they're looking to take over that space. For this project, they would be remodeling the exterior of the building, as well as the interior. With the exterior of the building shown here in our rendering, you see the dark gray areas. That is a masonry veneer material, which is, and that comes with a gray mortar, which is there. With the tan sections surrounding that, going up higher on the wall, that is a cedar finish Niche Ha fiber cement siding. And then you have the silver area above the entry doors, and along the top, that is an aluminum composite panel, and that is silver in color. So that's the three main exterior facade materials. Outside of that, it will have a full transparent glass entrance on the left side of the building. Above that, you will have a canopy for a covered entrance, and then we have a 120-square-foot Aldi logo sign above the canopy. To the right of the entrance, you see more windows there. That is the cart enclosure. So the enclosure will be closed on three sides, the main building wall, the exterior, and the far end, only open on the left side next to the entrance doors to obtain carts. Those windows will be on both sides of the cart enclosure, so that will allow natural light into the building. And then that canopy will extend from the entrance back over the cart enclosure as the roof. Just above the cart enclosure, you see a dark band there. That will actually be spandrel glass, so that it continues those windows up higher. The spandrel would just be a lightly tinted transparent glass, so it's not going to be Merit or anything of that nature. In regards to site improvements, I'm gonna switch. The site improvements are going to be relatively minor. We do have an existing truck well at the rear of the building that will be maintained, and the existing dumpster closure at the rear will also be maintained. Out front, the sidewalk area directly in front of the Aldi suite will be replaced, and then the parking area directly in front of the lease suite will be resurfaced and restripped. And then we'll be adding in four curbside pickup parking spaces in that area. That's really it. It's a pretty simple project as far as land development goes, but happy to answer any questions you have.
What's the square footage of the facility on Van Dyke at 21, do you know?
It's about 20,000 square feet.
Right, so this'll be a little bit smaller. This is what, 14?
It's actually 19,000, 523.
Okay, so about the same-
I think it was just a typo in the report.
Okay, so about the same footprint, okay. Uh, to the plan, Nick, I think you've covered, yes?
Yes, thank you. So the applicant did a great job summarizing the additions they're proposing to the site and the modifications. As far as the site plan goes, I only have one comment for the planning commission today. It's that the exterior surface is typically required to be brick or stone. Anything else has to be approved by the planning commission. The intent of that zoning ordinance is to ensure a high-quality design and a durable exterior materials used for all township properties.
Okay. And what they're proposing is consistent with the balance of the-
Yes, it's consistent with what other properties have used, you know, within that development nearby. The bagger days comes to mind. Some of the larger grocery stores have been using some of that fiber cement paneling.
Okay, thank you.
So it's not out of line with the surrounding development pattern.
All right, thank you. To the board, any questions?
I just have a question. I'm just curious. Do you plan on keeping open the other location in Van Dyke and Shelby?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Grott?
There are no further comments, I will make a motion.
Please do.
Move to approve site plan number 22-05, Andrew Shaw, for Aldi Food Market, located at 14229 Hall Road Suite 14257, parcel number 23-07-36-300-075, north of Hall Road, east of Shana Road, for proposed site modification.
Support.
Moved by Grott, support by Appone. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Grott?
Yes.
Commissioner Appone?
Yes.
Commissioner Luray?
Yes.
Christopher Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Chair of the chefs. Good luck.
Thank you.
Uh, next item is site plan number 22-06, Benno Amorino for Visionary Construction. Get your name and address, and what are you requesting?
My name is Ben Alarmino. I'm Shelby Township resident since 1980, 52848 Sable Court.
Okay. What are you, what are you requesting with this body today?
So I'm requesting to remodel a, a office building that I currently occupy on Hayes Road. Just very dated. I'm not really changing anything. We remodeled the inside a year and a half ago. It looked really, really nice. The outside's just not par for the course, per se. And so I want to do an update, which I gave plans and submitted plans to. The product that I'm gonna use is, I got three samples, we're going with three products. It is a Niche Ha product, similar to what Aldi, it is actually the same manufacturer as Aldi's using, just a different style. They have multiple lines, and this is the line I'm gonna particularly use. So I was, Nick was looking for a sample, so this is gonna be used on my office space. It is a cement fiber board, very strong, very durable. This is gonna be on the vestibule. It's gonna give it a nice little look, along with some glass on the outside, similar to what the plans show. And then this will be on the outside of the block, per se, which is the warehouse of the building, but not in its entirety, just the front sod and a small return on each of the sides.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
That's it. The only discrepancy I had, is like, you know, like Nick said, you guys were looking for brick on a portion of it. I don't know how it's gonna look with the brick. So I just want the option, if I wanted to do the whole front of the office with this material, that would be open for us to do that.
Okay, we'll, we'll consider that. Nick, you wanna offer your comments?
Yeah, of course, thank you. So as the applicant stated, there's no other changes to the site besides the facade. There's some changes to the architectural features on that building, but the majority of the site will be featuring that Niche Ha cladding material there. With that being said, there's fairly few site plan review comments for you. The first one would be that if there's any future existing roof mount equipment, it has to be screened from Hayes Road. It's typical for any industrial, commercial project. The exterior surfaces, as before, will have, shall be a brick or stone or the durable decorative material. Other durable decorative material will have to be approved by the planning commission. You also have to identify the proposed paint color of the bricks, if you decide to go with the bricks. If you decide to replace the bricks with the Niche Ha, the behest of the board here, it's quite all right. And then with the, the site plan, the architectural plan, clearly identify where the facade material will go on it. I know there's been some discrepancy on what you want to do and what was submitted. Just make sure with the final site plan that it reflects what you are actually proposing to do there.
Hundred percent.
And then the last one is from the building apartment. It looks like you have an open building permit and a particular zoning compliance application that need resolved. So just kind of building apartment?
They're coming tomorrow.
Perfect.
Yeah, they're gonna close it out tomorrow.
All right.
So as far as the paint, the bricks, I mean, obviously, it's a Zixton building. I don't know what, you know, I don't even know what color to pick for the brick yet, but if it doesn't, you know, if it doesn't look good with the Niche Ha product stopping midstream, you know, once again, I just want to be able to, hey, we're gonna go all the way through with that product. It does look good on a plan, but in person, it might look totally different, so I just want that option. That's all. Awesome.
Yes, so that was my discussion with Mr. Amorino. Though he did originally offer to leave a little bit of brick there and just paint over it. The paint would have to clearly be complimentary to the-
Very neutral, correct.
Yes, exactly. But if they would like to put the Niche Ha fiber cement paneling over that, that'd be up to the board to decide.
All right, so now, have you, you, you reviewed both proposals?
Yes.
So the only two proposals. I just hate to say-
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
To say, saying, ah, you know, I don't like it, I'm gonna change it. Oh, hang on, a second timeout. All right, so you, so it's two options, either you paint the brick, or you just continue to, with this new product, do the whole thing.
Correct.
And Nick, what you're telling me is, you're telling this board is that either would be-
Ah, yes, the brick actually is not a main feature of what would be remaining there. It would only be a small portion of the road frontage there would be, would see that, you know, painted brick, if it were to remain.
All right, so.
See, I don't know if it's gonna look good, just stopping. Like, the architects know better than I do.
It's a fair, it's a fair, it's a fair point, but I just wanted, I just want to know what we're voting for, okay?
Yeah, got it.
And if, if, if either option, and it sounds like either option would be, I think, appropriate, so I don't necessarily have an issue unless any of my colleagues here have an issue, but we'll move forward. To which case, I'll now turn it to the board. Does the board have any questions for the petitioner or planner? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, ladies first.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve-
A gentleman on Valentine's Day, you gotta give him that.
I move to approve site plan number 22-06 for Benno Amorino for Visionary Construction,
Inc., 50303 Hayes Road, parcel number 23-07-24-276-005, south of 23 Mile Road, west of Hayes Road, facade modification. The site plan is approved, subject to the submission of a revised site plan addressing all department comments.
Should I come?
Moved by Moore, support by Grott. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Grott?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Appone?
Yes.
Commissioner Luray?
Yes.
Chair of the chefs. Good luck.
You said Jalen.
Thanks.
Ladies. Good night.
Uh, next item is under Planning Director's Report, we have two items, the first being the- the 2021 annual report.
Uh, yes. Thank you, Chairman Moffett. Every year, the Michigan Planning Enabling Act requires the Planning Commission to make an annual report to the legislative body concerning its operations and status of planning activities, including recommendations regarding actions by the legislative body relating to planning and development. So this year's Planning Department report identifies amount of development that has occurred in the community during the past, and other accomplishments that we work on. So, basically, our department is responsible for the master plan, the zoning ordinance, community development block grant, capital improvement plan, the light initiative program, community visioning, zoning ordinance amendments, and the geographic information system, as we have progressed in the last few years with this, with the, with the system. Also, we, growth and development, along with retail and industrial business inventory listing that we keep, redevelopment sites. And this year, we did a little bit different. We had an Auburn Road business outreach. We identified all the businesses along Auburn Road and sent them a flash card of all the opportunities that are available to them, as far as MEDC and other program availabilities for funding through the county as well. So, we have done that as well. And this year, we were actually up in site plans and other applications. We were up 41 applications from last year, and the increase was largely attributed to applications with the Zoning Board of Appeals and tree permits in, in site plans. So during COVID, we allowed businesses to do outdoor dining with a temporary use permit, so that, that was the increase in, in the Zoning Board of Appeals. But, basically, that, that's about it in a nutshell.
Okay. Are there any questions for the planner? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner.
Move to accept the Planning and Zoning Department's annual report for 2021, and forward the report to the Board of Trustees for their consideration.
Support.
Moved by Turner, support by Luray. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. And next item?
So-
Zoning ordinance text amendments.
Yes, so just a slight modification, Chairman Moffett. Couple meetings ago, we introduced some zoning ordinance amendments to you, along with four new zoning ordinances. After reading through some of those, the attorneys recommended that the donation bins and the food trucks be in the code of ordinance instead of the zoning ordinance, as they are more regulatory than they are zoning. So we will be transferring those over to the code of ordinance, and we will move forward the rest of the, the amendments that were presented to you with that modification.
Great. Any questions for the planner? I don't think a, a motion is in order, it was more just of clarification. Business from the floor, is there anyone that wishes to address this body? It's a chance to tell you, say, tell the world how great your boss is.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
All right.
Yeah, you're allowed to say-
I said, I said that, and I said that with a straight face. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to-
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Turner and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.